This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectment is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as full and reasonable public access is afforded to the public so that they can follow along with deliberations of this meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, please dial 1-408-650-3123 using access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at www.global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. And with that, we'll rise for the
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no public comments this evening. Nor do we have any public hearings or presentations. So with that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four. That's Communications. Letter of the letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Governor's Office regarding the Auburn's location of Chapter 90 funds. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our members of the board, so this is an annual appropriation from the Commonwealth of Mass relative to roadway reconstruction. Chapter 90, we've been funded at a level roughly equal to this for the past several years. We were hoping that there was a supplemental appropriation relative to roadway work that was being considered by the legislature. Unfortunately, that action has not been taken yet. So consistent with our annual appropriation of Chapter 90 and the supplemental funds that we appropriate through local funds, 525,000. We have roadway improvement under the Highway Department. We have pipes and drainage under Engineering. This will allow us to assemble approximately about 1.6, 1.8 million dollars towards our roadway work. I think we indicated to the board that unfortunately, as a result of rising costs, we're not able to pave as much as we had in prior years. So that's something we may want to focus on and consider in future years to supplement what we have in order to get us more roadway work. And hopefully, we'll get more money from the Commonwealth that will allow us to do that in the short term. But we'll keep abreast of that if additional funds should become available.
Any questions from the board members? Seeing none, we will move on to No Gift Acceptances or Proclamations. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. We have the traffic study report on Pinehurst Avenue.
Through the chair, I, we were asked to bring a report in as a result of complaint that was filed, an inquiry that was filed by a citizen back, I believe, in November. And so I asked the Police Chief to present the findings of the study that was conducted in the fall of this year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Bart Lament for the results of that study.
Good evening, Chief.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Through the chair, does everyone have a copy of the study that I forwarded? So just to give you a historical, we can navigate through this. So this started months ago with the previous Town Manager. And there were some citizens that introduced this, I don't think initially as a problem, but that he had, there was an inquiry as to how we could lower speed limits on certain roadways in town. And I know that the Town Manager had Town Council look into that. So what we did, what you have before you is a comprehensive study that was done over a seven-day period. And I had charged my traffic officer, Jason Migliannico, to do it when it wasn't a time of, during the holidays or anything that would affect traffic. So he did one initially, and then when we brought this before the board, there was a lot of questions from some of the board members to kind of expand it, to try to look at some of the other speed limits as we progressed into Worcester and to prior to Pinehurst Street. So he did it, and I'll just hit the highlights of it. As you can see, it's a heavily traveled street. During that summary, total vehicles traveling north and south on a seven-day period were 65,533 vehicles. Of note, the average speed of all those vehicles during that seven-day period was 39.48 miles per hour, and the average speed traveling in the opposite direction was 37.58 miles per hour. The 85th percentile was 42 and subsequently 45. And Officer Migliannico's conclusion is that of mine. It is not one of our problematic roads that we have in this area. It's our roads where we have crashes, Selbridge Street, Route 12, and Route 20, and some of the crossing ways. Those are the roads where the speeds are higher and the volume is higher, and those are the roads that we have in areas where we have problems on. This particular roadway, although by definition, the officer wrote by definition is a thickly settled area, which would generally be a 30 or 35 mile per hour speed limit, is 40. And it's my understanding that before my time, it was initially 30, and the town raised the speed limit to the 40 mile per hour zone. It's not an area of concern. It's not an area where we have pedestrian crashes or motor vehicle crashes. And as you can see, people are, when they, when the DPW, not the DPW, but when Mass DOT does determinations, they do these traffic studies themselves to see how fast the vehicles are traveling on the roadway. One of which I mentioned to this board in the past was Washington Street or Route 20 down by Old Common Road, where it used to be 40, and they raised it to 50. And I have contacted Mass DOT officials to address that because we've had some very, very serious crashes down there. I do not have the same concern for Pinehurst Street. And that's really it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions of the board members?
So the traffic count, the 65, 533, that was during a what period?
It was during the seven-day period, and it was done back, I believe, in June.
Okay. So then when I see the 85th percentile, so that's telling me over 9,000 cars are going above the speed limit?
Yes. And I don't think that's an alarming number because people speed on all the roadways, no matter what road you're on, for the most part, unless it's a little cut through or secondary street, people are going to speed. The speed limit on Route 20, most of Route 20 here in Auburn, is 40. On any given day when you come into town, when I commute in the morning, if I don't travel down Stafford Street, you know, the average speed's between 55 and 60 miles an hour. They're going to speed on all of the roads. It all depends on what you look at as an egregious speed. Do I think that 42 or 45 is an egregious speed? If you look at the data sheet at the end and within this document, you'll see there'll be some flyers, there'll be someone doing in the 50s on Pinehurst Street, which is an excessive speed, which is why we've been deploying our police officers down there to enforce the speed limit and write traffic citations and educate the public and be visible so the speeds are safe and reasonable. And by all accounts, we're accomplishing that for the lack of accidents that are down there. Worcester recently redeveloped that whole area down there, and they put in pedestrian crossing signs and lights down where they've developed some of those commercial buildings down there. And they're, they are very visible down at that end as well.
No, and I just wanted to be clear because, I mean, again, over 9,000 vehicles that could be potential. So I just want to know the citizens that it is valid that they're seeing speeders, and it's just your professional opinion that no actions necessarily needed at this. But to me, if 10,000 cars were speeding down my street, it absolutely
It is, and I can, I can tell the board that through survey, through call complaints into the, into the Police Department, I've said it before, I've said it to the Finance Committee, my, my number one complaint is traffic in town. And it's, it's, it's the norm for most police departments. That's what people complain. It's a quality of life issue for people in their houses and their roads when they're out with their kids. And it's the number one complaint. It's that being visible, they want us to be visible, and they want to keep their schools safe. And that's really it in a nutshell.
Through the chair, I know the last time you were here, you'd said Worcester had done a traffic study. And that section of 40 miles an hour is like a mile. It's not even, you know, it's pretty heavily settled. Are they coming out of Worcester doing 50?
It's both directions. It's both direction. They're, they're coming out of Auburn, heading to work, getting their coffees in the morning, heading, heading into the city and Stafford Street and up and over Airport Hill, and vice versa at the end of the day.
Gotcha. If we did or ask Town Meeting to lower the speed limit to like 30 there to match what it is coming out of Worcester, coming into Auburn from Worcester, do you think people would slow down? I just, I think if, if they're going 30, 40 in Worcester, and they're upping it to 50 when they see the 40 miles an hour, if I were living on that road, and I live on a fairly heavily traveled road as well, that I think people fly down, I would like to see it lower.
So it's a very fair question. Let's go back to the traffic study that gathered the actual speeds and how Mass DOT determines speed limits. They look at what the average, what the median speed is that vehicles are traveling, and they also study, and they do crash analysis. So I'm looking at this from an analytical point of view. We're not going to crash this down there. We don't have pedestrian accidents, and the speeds aren't egregious. Where do I see egregious speeds? I see egregious speeds at 20 and Prospect Street, which is why you see a lot of police cruisers on Route 20 and Prospect Street. I see 70, 80, sometimes 90 mile an hour speeds on some of our state roads that cut through town. Where do I see a lot of crashes? I see a lot of crashes on Selbridge Street, Route 12 at Goulding Drive, where people are pulling out of the Packard Store and driving across the street to get at CVS, kind of shooting the gauntlet. Because Route 20 is being addressed right now. Big project, I don't know if anybody's been in West Auburn yet, but it's ramping up for the next couple of years, and they're widening the road and taking out some of the curves. Chief Sade from Oxford told me that they're actually going to put a roundabout in, which is going to be interesting to see down at, across from New England Agon Turf, the old 146 supply. So they're doing some major construction down there, and they're dividing the roadway to decrease head-on collisions and make, make it safer because of the speed. What I see in the, in the town that I drive through every day, they divided Route 20 from Richardson's Corner Road all the way down to Route 31 where it crosses, and it decreased the amount of crashes, but the speeds went way up. It's, it's, they, they, they move on that roadway. And I want to get away from Pinehurst Street. I think this, I think the study tells you, they're going about as fast in Worcester as they are in Auburn. Worcester, they put in a couple of, they raised the road in a couple of locations where there's pedestrian crosswalks down there. But again, I have to be very frank with you. It's not, that section of road is not an area that I have concern with.
I understand what you're saying, but we go from like 20 by St. Joe's to 30 down the hill to 40 through that residential section. And going back the other way, it's like right in front of where JB is, it drops to 25. I don't know that 30 is unreasonable.
Well, again, it's the board's decision. It is, by definition, meets a thickly settled area. I'd love to know the history on why the Town of Auburn voted to change it from 30 to 40. Because I don't, because I don't know what the history, but it was before my time.
I agree, and I have spoken to people who live in that neighborhood that have said that they've asked the town how they go about it before as well. So I think this is not like the first inquiry on how to slow people down there.
Through, through the chair, do you have objections if we were to recommend to go to Town Meeting and get reduced? Do you have concerns if it was a lower speed that that would increase the amount of accidents?
I don't, I don't. Like, like I said, I think it's a very fair and reasonable ask. It's a thickly settled area, but it's not a problem. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's not a problem, it's not a problem with some of our roadways. We did the, I worked with Julie and Ed and DPW a year ago, November, with the Shared Roads Grant that we applied for, and we worked very hard on that. And we were awarded a decent amount of money to address the roads and the sections of roadways where I have concerns. I have concerns about Auburn Street, the future development down there with kids, pedestrian traffic, walking to the high school. I have concerns about the park, the dog park, the skating arena. Those are all areas that were addressed in the grant that I do have concerns about. You know, we had, you know, the state's back, but we had a Citizens Academy, and we had someone, we had a pedestrian that was struck by a motor vehicle, one of our, one of our citizens in town that was coming to the police academy. You'll see, if you drive by the police station at any given time, you'll see the speed sign that's out there. The speed sign's out there because we can't always be out there, but it's collecting the data and alerting the drivers to slow down because it's a park that's heavily attended, the baseball fields and all of that. So that's really it in a nutshell with Pinehurst. It's not an area that I have a great deal of concern.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carpenter?
And I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the extra information that you gave me. I get that it's not a concern from a speeding perspective, but if I live on Pinehurst and I want to go across the street, how do I do that safely? If I want to cross to Otis Street or one of the other Lincoln Street, the speeds are very high for some of whom might want to cross the street. So as I went down there, I was looking, the, the lack of crosswalks, even at those cross streets, seems to me problematic to me because it is a residential neighborhood, and people should be able to get to the other side of the road safely. So I, I understand that it's not a speeding. If I'm in a car, it's not a problem. But if I'm living on the street and I simply want to cross the street and walk in the non, you know, traffic-y Pinehurst Ave, to your point with Goulding Drive, you're, you're running across it with a pavement, and that's if you can run across it. I mean, we have seniors and others who still want to walk, but don't necessarily
Well, that's certainly something that the DPW engineers can look at, and they could, they can take a look at, at placement for traffic study. That's beyond my scope of where they would design crosswalks down in that area, whether or not the town has appetite to put electronic signs. Some of them are solar powered, some of them are direct powered down in that area. That's what the Shared Roads Grant that we applied for with the DPW to be put up in key areas around town, Bryn Mawrav, a good portion of Oxford Street, Auburn Street down by the high school, West Street for the middle school, Swanson Road, replacing some of the old signage and flashing warning signs when the kids are getting off the buses because we've all driven down Swanson Road and been, and been caught behind all the vehicles waiting with the parental drop-offs down there. Those are the areas that I was really concerned with, the amount of pedestrian traffic and people crossing the street down there. Although we have had some complaints for speeding, which I know you all know, Mr. Carpenter, because we did a lot of research to look, look at, to my recollection, we haven't had any complaints or calls about inability to cross the road down there.
And they may not have even thought that that was something to bother the police with. I don't know. I'm just saying, from a practical standpoint, we want people out in the neighborhoods. We want people to be able to walk. It is a residential neighborhood. It's reasonable. You know, they may have friends, if you have school-aged children, they may have, and you know, should they not be able to, if their parents think it's safer for them to cross the street to that other side? I don't know. I'm not a parent, but at 40 miles an hour, I don't know that I'd be sending my child, even with myself, walking him across the street. So my other thought was, I know we missed this Town Meeting because it weren't closed last week, but is it possible to have another speed sign put up just to see what the speeds are at a different time of year?
Absolutely. Right now, my, my officer that does this, he's an expert in this field. He's, he's out with a surgery. He'll be back soon, and we can certainly take a look at it, especially at the, do you have a, a time period in mind?
No, I was just thinking, we're, we're getting into the warmer weather where people are, tend to be out, tend to have family cookouts, tend to have neighborhood events. You know, people, this might increase people wanting to cross the street at those locations.
So I can have them, have them look at it from that perspective and spend some time down there, and we can do another week-long study after the snow melts.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for all the extra work that you put in. I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
I'm sorry, I also have one other question. I know when this first came up, you said that Worcester had done a traffic study on their end in that area too? Am I remembering that correctly?
I don't think you are. I just know that, I presume that the engineers did because there was a significant amount of roadway improvements and changes down there, and I don't think they just do it. I think they look at the traffic volume, and, and there was definitely some engineering that went into that down there with how busy it is down there with Dunkin' Donuts, and now you have the new condos down there.
Okay. That's all we got. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Chairman, would you like a motion to matter of fact that we're asking as a board for another study and that we're considering a
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we request through the Town Manager to the Police Chief that another traffic study be done as we discussed, and that we use that and put this on a future agenda item to discuss potentially sponsoring a article, and also asking DPW through the Town Manager about potential crosswalk development.
Second. Did you get that, Chairman? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6B. We have the legal opinion from Town Council regarding Pinehurst Avenue. You guys have that in your packet. I'm sure you have the chance to review that. Town Manager, Town Manager want to discuss that one?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know these two are related, and I know the board had asked Town Manager to, to seek an opinion from Town Council relative to the authority, who has the authority to change the speed regulation as it applies to Pinehurst or any other public way. So there are four questions that were asked of Town Council. One, who has the authority to rescind an existing special speed regulation? And that has to do with the item that you just discussed prior to this one. Back in 1980, there was a special speed regulation as part of a bylaw change under Chapter 17, which included Pinehurst Ave and Packard Truck Street. Town Council indicated, based upon his review, that the authority to rescind an existing special speed regulation specific to Pinehurst, which was number 6085, his answer is Town Meeting. So this would have to go back to Town Meeting to rescind what is currently set at 40 miles per hour. Another question that was asked, who has the authority to set the speed limit on town public ways? And that authority rests with the Board of Selectment, and his opinion is in here that makes reference to that citation. The question was asked, can the Town Manager rescind the vote to establish a speed regulation? And Town Council did not find any citation or authority that would allow the Town Manager to make that, that recommendation. And finally, does Town Meeting have the authority to rescind the speed regulation vote of the Select Board? And his answer was no. So I think specifically, the matter that was discussed tonight has to do with question number one. I think Selectment, Carpenter indicated that, that opportunity, the warrant is now closed, so that opportunity would have to be considered if the board has an appetite to do that, that it go to a supplemental Town Meeting either in the fall. And I think the, the new study that is being asked by the Board of the Police Department, hopefully that data will, will help forge that decision of the board.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, we're moving on to Agenda Item 6C, Discussion on Flag Committee Vacancy.
So we, a former board member reached out to me via email, Tristan, asking if he could serve on the Flag Committee, although he is working out of state, he's still a town resident. And I think the remote aspect or the hybrid aspect of these meetings would allow him to participate. I caution to Tristan that, that consideration for remote is tied to a, a date certain, March 31st, and did not know if that was going to be extended by the legislature. So I think if we want to put it out, that vacancy out and advertise for that again, that he could consider putting in for that, and certainly that's up to the board because that appointment is the board's. That we should know at that time whether or not the 31st is going to be extended. That may offer him an opportunity to still serve.
Questions, comments of the board?
Just a quick one. Is this the board seat or is this a residency that's, there's a vacancy?
So it was my understanding that Tristan served, I believe, as a member of the board. So I think the, the board would have to change the composition of that. That would transition that from a board member, unless there's a board member willing to serve.
Yes. Well, I would, I would like to hold it over to the next meeting, probably even into April, just to see what the legislature's thought is rather than do something. But we potentially will have three new members of the board in the upcoming elections, so I would want to deprive them of serving on the committee if that was something that they had an interest in. It's not a time-sensitive item, for me anyways. I don't see it as a time-sensitive item that we couldn't wait, at least till April, but I'm happy to.
Through the chair, is there any concern with him not physically even, I know he's a resident, but his actual time in the state is probably not what they would normally consider due to special circumstances?
No, we don't know if they're going to extend the, the
Correct, but if they extend it, like, is there a concern that, like, other people would try to do that? And, and again, like, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, understanding his, but I just want to make sure whatever regulations are cited, that, you know, military service is definitely something
Auburn residents.
Correct. But that's, so I just want to make sure that that residency is tied, and there isn't a concern with somebody who is going to move out, but they still haven't officially left the town. Because what is it, 300 or half the year, six months and one day? So again, I just don't want to open ourselves up to anything, so.
I think when you look at the legalities of it all, he is still a town resident, and he's a registered voter. So I think those are two criteria that is, is used in the eligibility of serving on a, on a board or committee.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion to, or we can just carry this over? Need a motion for that. So we'll carry this over to the, Dan, you said the April meeting?
Yeah, first meeting in April, first meeting in April. If it makes sense to do that, Mr. Chairman.
I think that does, yeah. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 6D. We have the vote to authorize, accept, and expend grant funds from the Stanton Foundation for Capital Improvements to the Dog Park. And I believe Ms. Coyle is going to be presenting on that matter. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So this evening, we are requesting a capital improvement grant request for the Auburn Dog Park. The Dog Park is coming up on two years of being open in mid-April. Hard to believe it went by that fast. Dog Park is very well-attended, and this grant through the Stanton Foundation is something that they allow the town to be able to apply for capital improvement money. And so that request tonight is for the ability to apply and then receive the grant funds and be able to expend them, similar to other grants that we have applied for. The Stanton Grant does have a total of about 37,500 that the town is eligible to apply. to apply for. So we're hoping that the board will allow us to move forward in that direction. We have been discussing it and we're still putting the details of all of it together, but we are hoping that we have your support to do that.
Excellent. Questions of the board?
Yeah, Mr. Carpenter?
Sure. So through you, Mr. Chairman, what type of items are eligible under this grant and is there, as you're indicating, this is still in a discussion phase as to what, what these could be potentially used for? Is there any sort of time limit that needs to be that to expend the funds?
Yes, thank you for asking. So the, the way that the grant, the grant is presented is that we have, at the two-year mark, we have to indicate that we are interested in pursuing those grant funds. So there is a time sensitivity in the fact that we would need your approval to apply for the grant. The items that, we're not exactly certain of what we can spend, expend the money for, but we're looking at possible, anything that would be an enhancement of the Dog Park. So whether that is, you know, items to, you know, help the enrichment of the dogs, there is some like equipment agility-type things that the animals can utilize, very expensive, anywhere from like a thousand upwards per piece. So we look at something like that, possibly some landscaping, some additional signage that may help, and also this discussion would engage the, we have friends of, so for friends, we have a group that was very helpful in the development of the Dog Park. So that discussion would also include input from them as well.
So I don't think I heard it, but I could have been zoned out, so I apologize. Is there a limit or a timeframe on when we need to expend the funds?
Expand the funds?
Yeah, so if you're awarded the thirty-seven five or whatever, is there, my recollection from when we were doing this at the beginning, was they had a fairly strict timeline with the construction, so I'm just somewhat wondering if they're, if they followed through with a kind of guideline as to, okay, we award you the grant by fiscal year, whatever, the funds need to be expended, whatever reporting has to be completed, those type of things.
Okay. I don't have an, an exact answer for you tonight. We are focusing right now on trying to, you know, meet the grant requirements for applying. However, that would be part of making sure that we understand that part of it before we do apply. But we have made contact with the Stanton Foundation, indicated that we would like to move forward in the CIP process and the details of that, certainly we can follow up and give an update to the board once we have more information.
If I could add to that, Mr. Chairman, as I understand in my discussions with the ACO, Amy Kontois, we are treating this, there are like three mini-grants that'll add up to thirty-seven five. You're allowed to bank those to ask for one grant. That being said, I think it's my understanding that those mini-grants take place starting at the end of year two, that goes through year four. So when you look at the mini-grant aspect of that, you may have up to two years to expend that, but I'm not so sure once you bank it, whether that condenses the time period or not. But that's something we can look into and, and get back to you on.
Do you think through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, that they may disperse them and that their mini-grants, they may disperse them separately? Do you think that even though you're applying as one thing, they might disperse them?
No, I think the dispersments would be based upon the entire amount and not the three mini, because we're not submitting it as three mini, three mini, we're doing it as one grant.
And my last thought is just to be, I'm very concerned about liability and I know that was brought up when we built the park initially, so anything that we do there that, and I know that you will, but I just need to say it out loud, that we're very conscious of what we put there, that we're conscious of the liability of the town if an animal is injured using any of this equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
It's not a matching grant, correct? It's, it is not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize and accept and expend the grant funds from the Stanton grant for capital improvements to the Dog Park in the sum total of thirty-seven five, up to thirty-seven five.
One second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it is a vote.
Thank you for your support. Much appreciated.
All right. You know, we have Agenda Item six E on the agenda for the development agreement on update to Perry Place. The really only update is that it's still being bounced back with the attorneys on some final revisions, so we're going to move that over to the next, the three-twenty-seven meetings, so long as the attorneys have spoken. All right, so moving on to F, we have the WUSOX event, announcement of the Auburn Night at Polar Park, Wednesday, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to put this out there, so we did agree on a night, Wednesday, June twenty-first. There are twenty-two towns vying for what we can claim as the top participant last year. So we are, everyone's coming after us, we're hoping to retain that title.
Returning champions.
And in doing so, we are named Auburn Youth and Family Services as our nonprofit. So there is a benefit, not only for us maintaining that status, but certainly, as it was last year, I believe five dollars of every ticket sold, five dollars, if, if you so choose to choose a nonprofit, that will go to AYFS, and that's a good thing. So there's a benefit to our local community, to the, to the residents of our community and to the services they provide to, to our residents as well. So we're hoping you can attend and we're going to publicly put it out there in hopes of getting as much participation as we can.
So, is that, if you purchase through a certain link or is that all box office tickets get to five dollars?
No, you have to choose the nonprofit. They, the, the WUSOX are not matching or the ticket is increased by the value of the...
Okay, so it has to be through the link?
It has to be through the link, yes.
Yeah, no, and that's why I just want to make sure that people are aware, like if you're trying to support the town, that it has to be through that website and?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. And then there'll be some media push-outs through the town website with the link?
Yes, correct.
And then I believe the school department?
Yep.
Did a lot of work on that? So I don't know who else did? Yep, so I don't know who else did, but like it worked last year, so I'd like to make sure we continue to utilize those resources and hopefully get that link shared as many times as possible.
And it would be in the best interest of AYFS to push it out there as well.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item, we have no tabled items, so eight A, that is the student rep position. I'll hand it over to Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, so I have been talking with the manager and the school superintendent and the school superintendent has met with staff at the school. They are currently in their trimester, so Mr. Kennard is looking at his curriculum for the next trimester and will have more information at that time, but it, it appears that they would like it to be more of a have the manager come, have a member of the board to come, potentially have the student body come to a meeting and other things like that, which, you know, I think anything that we can do to get people to pay attention is great and I know this is a big lift for, you know, and there's a lot of moving parts that even I, you know, kind of didn't acknowledge probably in my brain well enough. I'm still not, you know, wanting to give up on the position, but I think for the initial year, it would make sense to see, you know, get some of the younger kids in and then maybe the following year or the year after that, say, hey, we'd like a student rep position, you know, it's been going pretty good for the last couple of years, so maybe start on a smaller scale and then move up, but I'm gratified that the school committee and both the superintendent and the manager, as well as all of you, support this idea and I think that's, that's, it's a big win, so. So I look forward to, as I get further information, I will bring it back to the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, and do we have any edits, revisions, concerns on the minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three? Seeing none, we'll accept it as drafted and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The votes.